Welcome to the Monday, September the twelfth, two thousand twenty-two, City Council meeting for the city of Lamar. I'm Mayor Kurt Krespin. Uh, we do have a very full agenda tonight, so I will keep it short and sweet because we have some guests in the audience and I'll need to speak as well. But moving forward, we will start with our invocation. Jeff Alexander couldn't be here, so Dan, will you be able to?
We want to thank you and praise you for, for your blessing and your protection upon our city. While we thank you for the, our city administration and our council. We pray that, that our council tonight will have insight and wisdom as they go through the matters of business. Give them, give them wisdom so that they know what to do, the best decisions. Father, we pray that you will just be improving our city and expanding our city. We thank you for that already. Father, we just, we just thank you for taking care of us, and we ask for your continuing work. We ask this in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Anne Marie, would you lead us in the play? Hey, the time is now seven oh four P M. I will call the meeting order. Rocco?
Joe Gonzalez.
Here.
Mike Bellamy.
Here.
Jerry Jenkins.
Here.
Kurt Krespin.
Here.
Manuel Temez.
Here.
Anne Marie Crampton.
Here.
Ronald Evans.
Here.
Kristen Swartz.
Here.
Lance Clark.
Here.
Okay. Before we get started tonight, of course, last week was a little emotional for us, and as I was doing the opening, uh, we lost a cherished member of our council with Oscar Riley. Anytime we have a council member retire or leave the council, we try to give them uh, some token of our gratitude. And tonight, I invited Leroy Riley and her son and family to come and attend this tonight. So if you don't mind, give me a couple of minutes. I'd like to say a few things. Well, as I said, Oscar Riley was very important to our city council, and um, I think it's important for us to recognize the ten years of service that he gave to the city of Lamar. We also, if you wouldn't mind coming up, I'd like to invite Leroy's the family up, just for a second. He was very important to us, and he was a, a charity member for sure. Um, trying to hold myself together. So um, I wanted to make sure that we honored his service, as I said. Ten years as a council member is very important. All this kind of passing along. And then Leroy, this is presented to Oscar Riley, Gerald Oscar Riley. Thank you for your years of service to the city of Lamar on March twentieth, from March twelfth, two thousand twelve, to September of two thousand twenty-two, so ten years. So, thank you very much. I know being a council member is one thing, but having your foundation support is the only way to make that happen. So it really means a lot for, for us to honor you as well, for all your support, thirty years. Council want to say anything, or?
Just thank you.
Well, if you'll join me in a round of applause for Oscar.
Thank you very much.
Okay, moving on. We've all had an opportunity. Well, before we move forward, we do have a, a change to the agenda. One item that it came up to actually on Friday, um, due to some extended situations where it delayed our project. Um, we did have an amendment to have the council review and approve or deny. So we wanted to add this in on agenda item number fourteen into the council meetings. So if we can have a motion and to put that on number fourteen, and we will move number fourteen, which is a miscellaneous items, down to fifteen, and then the executive session to sixteen. So we would just insert number fourteen into the agenda as shown. Is the council okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, in a second?
Oh, second, yeah.
So I have a motion and a second to amend the agenda to include the one item that was not previous then. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
unanimous in favor of?
All right. We've all had an opportunity to review the consent agenda. Were there any items that needed to be taken out to be voted on separately?
Yes.
Okay. It looks as though we do have one item that has A and B liquor, and um, you wanted to abstain and vote on that separate, is that correct? Okay. So we'll vote on A and B liquor separately. Are there any other items that need to be voted on separately? Okay, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda without A and B liquor?
So moved.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Where you can vote.
Um, sorry.
Yes. Yeah.
So Jerry did not need to hit the abstain button for the consent agenda, so it's unanimous in favor of.
Yeah.
And now we need to vote for.
Okay, so now we would need a motion to vote on A and B liquor as a separate item.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve uh, A and B's liquors um, renewal application.
Just gonna be a verbal vote.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. And Jerry Jenkins had some stage. All right, moving on to the next item on the agenda, we have the public comment section.
Step the rest of the consent agenda.
No, we approved it to begin. Yes, yes, we approved the consent agenda without that item, and then we voted on the regular item separately. So, yes. Okay, and the next item on the agenda is public comments. During this portion of the meeting, anyone may speak on any subject that does not appear on the agenda. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each, and that is at the discussion of the council. Is there anybody here tonight that would like to speak to the council on the topic? I will set the timer for the three minutes. You like to come up and state your name and address for the record?
Hello, my name's Michael Hernandez. I'm back again here again. And um, my condolences goes to the Riley family and to the, the folks here. And what I wanted to say here is a little bit about me last time I was here, just about the charter that came in and everything. Um, I do got a brother that's a doctor. I do got sisters in the medical field. I'm retired. I've been in litigation. I've been in the big courts. And I don't know what discrimination is. When people come back and says you can't have a dispensary on Main Street, and you can have a liquor store on Main Street, that's discrimination. I know the courts. I'm not a liar, but I like to read the Bible. I like to read Constitution. And uh, I like the law. But I like the word of God more than the law. Especially when it infringes my liberties about the cannibuses that's in the Bible. Now, we're in here to turn around and pull people to the Bible of the word. Now, if it's in Frank and Satan, Mer and cannibuses, that's in exact Exodus thirty twenty-three. And we get up and pray to the heavenly father for guidance and wisdom. It's right there in the book. It's not in People's Magazine. And I got another thing about Mr. Miller, Kyle Miller. He has his hands full. I've talked to him a long time ago when I came from Garden Street, and he goes, Michael, the cocaine's here, and the meth and the heroin's here. Of course, the drug task force. They need a drug task force. Look at the children in the houses. Don't you care about the children? I don't have no children, but I care about the children. We need to step up, not step back. Now, my wife's a two-time cancer survivor. Stayed four twenty years ago, and I still got her. We do holistic medicine. No way with pharma. But that's a person's choice. Our body wasn't made for sinning oils in syringes put in our body. We need to be an advocate and start pulling out those bandages off and those masks. They're scaring people. People don't even want to shake people's hands. I feel sorry for it. I've been in litigation. And I feel sorry for what you people got to go through. I know about the Adamant funds. I know how Peter pays Paul. And it with all the respect, I would like to have a dispensary here to pay back that. I swear that they turned around and put up and put tore down. With all the respect, I'm not here to go against nobody. I just want freedom and peace and love, especially with the kids. I care about this community. If I didn't, I wouldn't be here today. I care. And the Constitution? Oh.
Want to wrap up?
Okay, Constitution is designed, it wasn't meant to restrain the people. It was made to restrain the government from abuse of our rights. I hope the best for everybody.
All right, thank you. Okay, is there anybody else would like to speak to the council? Yes, come on up. If you'll just state your name and address for the caprakers.
Well, I did have a question. What I want to speak on is on the agenda. Should I wait till later, or can I speak now?
Usually we wait until the agenda time if you're gonna.
If you'd like to speak on that, I guess we, is that presentation?
No, just, I don't, I'm not sure what it is tonight, but something that's on the, the House regulation.
Yeah, we can um, because we, would you like to invite him up during that discussion instead of during it now? Okay, so we'll do that. Okay. All right, any others who would like to speak to the council that's something that's not on the agenda? Okay?
This is Channing Curry, Laban, Sail Place, Lamar, Colorado. I uh, being that we can speak on anything now, um, are you allowed to answer questions?
Well, not really, because we're trying to listen to the public. It's a public, you know, for you to come in and speak to the council. Um, as I mentioned before, back in July, the first part of July, you and I had a conversation. We were trying to schedule a meeting. That way we could have an actual discussion, but you didn't want to do that at the times that we had available. If you would like to meet with the council, maybe with the city administrator, myself, we could set up a time, but this is not the time to do that for open discussion. So.
Okay.
That would be up to you.
Okay, then I guess I will have to set up time with you. Uh, why is the city attorney not present?
He is online on Zoom. He is out of town on the conference. He is on the online.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any others who would like to speak to the council on an item that's not on the agenda? Okay, seeing that, we will move on to the next item, which is the city treasurer's report. Chris Danforth.
Hi, thank you. I don't have a report tonight, but if anybody had any questions for me, I gladly try to answer them.
Okay. Anybody? Seeing none, we'll move on to the city clerk report.
So the July sales and use tax collected in August was four hundred thousand five hundred twenty-four dollars and fifty-four cents, which was down four point seventeen percent or seventeen thousand four twenty-eight thirty-seven from two thousand twenty-one. Our year-to-date collections are three million two hundred eighty-two thousand three hundred eighty-three dollars and fifty-one cents, which is a one point fifty-nine percent or fifty-one thousand four hundred thirty-seven dollars and eight cents from two thousand twenty-one. And that's all I have to say.
Okay.
On the uh, the January through August, under the manufacturing, I see um, twenty twenty-one at thirty-three thousand and twenty twenty-two at five thousand. Is there a reason that?
We had one particular entity that did some, some upgrades to their business, which last year, which caused them to submit a significant amount of, amount of use tax.
Okay. Great. Any other questions for the city clerk? Seeing none, we'll move on to the city administrators' report.
Okay, um, we've had still some decent success on showing up for uh, Coffee with Rob, you know, a couple of issues that have come back later and have been, you know, significant enough to uh, be a success for the city, so we're gonna still keep that up. Uh, daylight donuts brewing to others and then rivals. So I'm gonna go up, I'm gonna go down south on the road, and then I'll come back on north on the road. Uh, I would like to bring up to the council and to everybody else that the success story we've had here recently, and it's something to highlight and to show that the city is doing great things, and, and it's in our uh, fire department. So I would like Jeremy to come up here and give you guys some good information.
Thank you, sir. Mayor, council. So in the packet I included some really big news for us. Uh, in April, we had our ISO evaluation. We know it's been coming for quite some time. Previous valuation was done in two thousand fifteen. We jumped from a five to a three. I'm happy to announce that on December first, we will jump from a three to a two. This will overall help um, insurers write better um, policies for our citizens and businesses, helps lower insurance. Now, that's kind of a caveat, because there's still, you know, the length of the policy, the, um, you know, any other claims you've already had in the past and stuff like that, do they take into account for that? So we were graded on three different categories. One was fire suppression. That was the easy one. Then we had the nine-one center uh, with Kyle's guys, and then we also had water waste water with uh, Pat's and Robbie's guys. Um, so they sit there and look at, you know, our mains. Do we have enough water and maintenance of all of our equipment and nine-one dispatchers and the staffing? So out of the thirty-nine thousand eight hundred fifty departments evaluated this year, this cycle uh, puts us in the top four percent nationwide. So.
I'm sorry.
Oh, no, I'm done. No, I'm done. For Colorado, there's only nine class one departments, and those are some of the large uh, metro area departments, uh, but there are fifty-nine class twos. So uh, we're, we're amongst those groups. Um, places like Loveland, Pueblo, um, Grand Junction are all class two. So we're, we're pretty proud of what we've accomplished. Um, and ISO two is very easily maintainable for our size community.
Good job, Jerry.
That's great. Thank you very much. Congratulations.
All right, going on to the CML Fall District Meeting. Uh, we're gonna have that at, on the fifteenth at four P M. in Rocky Ford at the Gobins Building. Is that how you pronounce it, Gobin? Uh, followed by a social and Italian dinner, but uh, this is our fall regional meeting, I guess district meeting. We have a Serso, Sersa Regional Meeting. Uh, let me, September twenty-second, uh, eleven-thirty to one-thirty at the Cultural Events Center here. We have some projects that we're doing here that I would like to highlight and let you guys take a look at. Is uh, today, we started on the pedestrian bridge. Foundation stuff, you know, very soon you'll be seeing a, a big bridge coming down on some heavy equipment transports coming out, and they'll be putting those out there and connecting them, and we'll have the, the, the walkway will be one of those projects that you guys started a while back, and we'll be able to get closer to finish it. So anyway, that's a project's ongoing, and it's a success.
So just to clarify, this is the pedestrian bridge towards the college on the south end of town, so the students can walk across or pedestrians can walk.
That's right.
Safely. Good.
Uh, tomorrow, you will see some work done out there at the uh, uh, Escondido Park, where we're gonna start the foundation work and everything for the uh, the, the building for the scoreboard and, you know, the press box.
Press box.
Where, that, that's when it starts. We're gonna be doing that ourselves as a project, and I believe that we have all of the equipment we will be able to do. We had a real rough time getting somebody to be able to bid it in the budget that we had, but we'll be able to get this done and, and do the city proud for the, the soccer fields. And if you guys had any other questions or miscellaneous projects or anything like that within the city, I'm here for you.
I was going with the street paving and the, all street paving updates.
Yeah, you should. We took a lot of good pictures out there. I don't want to have us up there. I got to sit on top of the laydown machine, but uh, we did get ahold of uh, uh, a milling machine. Uh, I know that Pat and all the guys are working really hard. You should see uh, before, this new machine really grinds it up fast and gets a, a street ready to pave much quicker than before. It doesn't take as, as long, so they will grind it up uh, all in a day and then come back the next day and pave it instead of grind, you know, taking so long that it took, they would ground them all up several in a row and then so for several days, you'd have to wait for them to pave all those ones that they worked on, but in two days, you'll have it ground up and repaved. So right now, we're doing really good.
It's great. Is there any um, transportation provide for the Fall District meeting? Hmm, I can.
I guess we could write out about it.
Or if anybody wants to carpool, we can do that, or, um, I don't think we have like a Pat's bus or anything like that. Well, they even brought theirs down. Yeah, they did the last time. Well, Hannah did, but.
That's right.
We could do something like that, but have to look into it.
Yep. I'll find out about that. I'll get back to you.
Tomorrow or something.
Yeah, tomorrow, so.
Who all is attending the meeting? Anne Marie, Manuel, myself, um, Mike, and so Jerry won't be able to make it.
Yes, I'm going.
Mike and Joe.
Okay.
All right, so we should have a good crew to attend and represent our community. All right.
Okay. That's all, nope, that's all I have.
I have one quick question. The last city council meeting, Oscar asked about a sign for Escondido Park is being worked on.
That is being worked on, and we did tighten up on, on the other questions he had about there, and so we do have adequate water and work.
Follow-up, so.
Yep, I did.
Yeah, I think signage is a big one for Escondido as well as North Gateway, so, but I know they've been working on it.
Thank you.
You bet.
Okay, moving along, we have, uh, now we have reports and correspondence from council members. Does anybody here have a report from their, these oppositions?
Thank you, Doc.
Mike?
None, from me.
Gary?
I do.
Great.
So, Powers Economic Prosperity has been looking for that second, that glorious second person to really add capacity and, and kind of look forward. Um, and we're excited to uh, announce that Tally Harmon has been um, hired as our project coordinator, and she will start October third.
I want to yell out a speech, and we will make it come up and do a speech. But she is here tonight in our audience, so.
Just accidentally here.
Congratulations. Manuel, anything?
Um, it's pretty much same as the last time. Our, our wells are adequate. We'll make it through the year, and uh, hopefully we're gonna have water coming for next year too, but we're, we're good for the year for our water wells.
Okay, I do have um, a couple of items. Powers Medical Center sent me and the whole council and all passes along. Um, there is a community engagement forum that they'll be hosting on September the twenty-first at two, at six P M. to seven P M. at Lamar Community Building. So this community engagement forum will give the community members and the community leaders the opportunity to learn about and provide feedback on the work at the hospital, uh, ways that they can, the hospital can help uh, support health and wellness within our communities. It'll just be an open discussion, um, but they did want to invite us to this. So if you can attend, it's September the twenty-first at six P M. to seven P M. at the Lamar Community Building. Aside from that, um, last Friday, uh, one of the organizations that we've worked with in the past called Action Twenty-Two, um, who represents a lot of different communities within southeast Colorado, ranging from Pueblo, Colorado Springs, all of southeast of Colorado and southern Colorado, including Alamosa and, and all those areas, they invited me to a meeting of the mayors in Pueblo last Friday. And I did attend and represented the city of Lamar. We had some very good discussions concerning um, different items ranging from housing issues and how do we hit new housing. Uh, there is a ballot proposition that'll be on the upcoming election in November for a housing uh, proposition that'll give three hundred and ten million dollars in the state of Colorado that'll be used for housing. It'll be passed through Department of Housing as well as CHAF. So um, there are some neat things that they're watching along the state and the state government side and the state house and state senate. They're also considering doing a potential proposing a bill um, to try to tighten up some of the legislation, legislation and judicial challenges that they've had since two thousand twenty. There was a bill that was passed a while back that um, relaxed a lot of the, a lot of the judicial um, requirements. So uh, many of the felonies became misdemeanors, maybe the misdemeanors became pettys, and it, it made it a challenge for officers to keep real criminals off the street. And cities like Pueblo and Denver, Colorado Springs, they're really noticing it. But when it comes to our rural area, we're really noticing it because it's so blatant. So Action Twenty-Two is uh, has asked the mayors to help assist in trying to find ways that we can create a ballot, a bill proposal for the senate to consider that will help tighten some of those regulations down. So we did um, have that full day meeting, and we decided to have another meeting on October the seventeenth as a follow-up, and we'll continue on from there. But it was a very good discussion, and I look forward to working with them more in the future. Um, the nice thing about the mayor's meeting with Action Twenty-Two was it dealt with the mayors from uh, the mayor from Pueblo was there, Trinidad, Rocky Ford, uh, myself, and if, and you know, if, if we're looking at the area that they cover, it's all of southern Colorado, which really affects us the most. Now, upcoming on October the twentieth and twenty-first, CML Colorado Municipal League will be holding their annual mayor's summit. But this mayor's summit that I'll be attending is statewide mayor, so it'll be all the mayors in the state. And of course, it's great to have all that feedback and information in those discussions, but I really liked the meeting of the mayors for sou- southern Colorado because it had a lot more in-depth discussions for what we did with here in southern Colorado. So I'm looking forward to both, um, looking forward to the upcoming meeting with CML for the mayor's summit, and I'll report back to you after that meeting as well. So with that said, there anything else for the council? Any questions? All right, so we'll move on to the new business. First item on the new business is a public hearing for a special liquor event permit for the Lamar Chamber of Commerce to host a beer garden during Oktoberfest and to grant permission and writing to allow the use of the city property. So this was brought in by the city clerk and police chief Miller. Linda, would you like to speak on it?
And do we want to go into the public hearing?
No, I guess we would need to do that.
And we'll go into public hearing, second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to move into the public hearing. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign.
Unanimous in favor of?
Yeah, well, we will start the public hearing now. To keep it on track, we have the special event permit that was submitted to us as a council uh, for our review. Do you want to start off with the?
Sure.
Explanation?
Um, so Lamar Chamber of Commerce, they turned in um, their application on August ninth. Were required to um, hold a public hearing for a special event permit. This is their second one for the year. And they've complied with everything um, that was requested of them. Um, it was posted onsite and in the paper um, on September first. And I believe they are here this evening. Um, also, on that, other than that, I will turn it over to police chief.
All right. Okay. All right, so generally what we do is we get the input from our staff and, and the chief, and then we open it up for people that are in favor, and then also for those that are against. So is there anybody here that would like to speak in favor of this? We have representatives from the Chamber of Commerce. Just state your name and.
Um, Tally Harmon and four twelve, more second. Lisa Shordy, uh, three zero eight zero zero, County Road six point five.
Okay, thank you.
So we're here to ask for. So we're here to ask for, for permission to have the beer garden at our Oktoberfest, um. So far, we are planning to have a B J throughout the day. Um, I know we're going to have a cornhole tournament that's being set up by Ron. Um, we are planning to do a bunch of little kid stuff away from the beer garden area. We're going to do it all throughout the enchanted forest. We're going to have. Um, a little pumpkin patch so the kids can decorate pumpkins. Oh, what else are we doing? Of course, B B B will be there, which we don't hold, but they hold, post it in conjunction with us, um. Lots of food vendors, um, merchandise, different merchandise vendors, kind of the same setup as we do every year. Um, we will be, we did request to do like we've done the last few years where we have fenced in the entire area. Uh, with vendors and everything so that people can carry their beers around to look at everything as opposed to just being in one tiny little tent. But we will do as usual and have somebody at the gate. They'll all be fenced in, checking IDs as people come in. Risk banning so only they can be served beer, obviously if they're twenty one and up, um.
So the pumpkin decoration and all the children events will be outside.
It'll be in the fenced in area, but it'll be away from like where the beer is being served in the tent and all of that. Um, you know, so people don't have to give their kids money and send them on their way. They can still supervise them. That seems like a good idea. But it's, you know, it's gone really well the last few years. We've had a great turnout. Of course, it's as anything weather permitting when it's outdoors, but. It's been really successful. We haven't had any issues with anybody misbehaving or anything like that. So it's been. Really good, I think. Yeah, we've got some, a lot of new ideas this year that we're pretty excited about, um. We're working on the details to do kind of a chili cook off and. Some different things like that. So we're excited, uh, as far as a kid's carnival is concerned, we've contacted a bunch of different organizations and found. To kind of help us run that to each run their own little booth and we're excited to get some more organizations involved in the event. Just make it a really big. Community celebration, um. Jerry, we are all tip certified. I knew you would ask.
It says five twenty-three.
Of twenty-three.
Oh, sorry.
I was like, I, I know, I just didn't. I've done it like four times.
Yes, thank you. That helps a lot, um.
And other than that, you know, well, uh, as always, we have the board there. That's tip certified serving, um, also, we're kind of on hand all day to make sure that trash is picked up and. People aren't, that aren't supposed to be drinking, are not drinking, all that good stuff.
Good.
Any question?
Did you guys put the bans on the ones that are drinking or?
Only the ones that can drink, yeah.
Okay.
And then we kind of do a double check system. So we do that when people walk in. And then we have a separate table closer to where we're serving, where we sell tickets though. That way we're only selling tickets to people that have the wristbands and then of course, when you go to buy a beer, we have to check to make sure you have one too. So. We're not just checking it in one place where people can.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Yeah, we'd love to have you guys out there that day.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else would like to speak in favor of the permit being approved? Saying none, is there anybody would like to speak in opposed?
Thank you, city council, for allowing me to speak tonight. I'm Galen Burnett. I live at eight hundred South Sixth Street here in Lamar. And I'm glad we're having an Oktoberfest, but. I, I don't think that it's the best thing for us to allow, um. Liquor or alcohol beverages there. Safety should be our number one paramount concern. As you think about this, you want to keep our people in our, in our city, in our area, safe. Want to keep them as safe as adults, safe as children. And if we open it up. To having alcohol there, then that is going to, um, chop up our safety a lot. Because we all know that anytime we add alcohol into a situation like that, something will go wrong. Even the ladies who spoke earlier tonight. Were giggling about, you know, somebody could do something that they weren't supposed to do, so they have to have their bands and you have to be checked. People are basically sinful. And if they get much of an opportunity, they will do sin. The scripture says sin is pleasurable for a season. But in their other is destruction. Now, I'm not here to preach to you. I'm here to give you guys an opportunity. And to have some knowledge about it. Some people get intoxicated quite fast. Some people can take quite a bit more drinking. But we should not allow, there is no safe amount of alcohol that you can consume and drive. We know that there are some problems like motor skill problems, uh, when you're drinking alcohol. We know that it can, uh, lead up to even acute alcohol poisoning, which results in death. We're told to drink responsibly, but what does that mean? If you ask a dozen people, you're going to get a dozen answers that are, that are not going to be matching up. Corresponding, are not going to be, uh, uniform there. We have problems making, uh, poor versus good decisions when we're drinking. There's a lot of peer pressure placed upon others to be drinking. I remember when my father-in-law was told by his doctor. Do not take another drink in your life. But his good friends here in Lamar. From some organizations that he was involved with. Pressured him, oh, it won't make any difference. Well, nobody will notice, Tom. Yeah, we noticed it. Oktoberfest. What do you have for a transportation plan? Do you expect the people to walk there and walk home? Do you expect them to drive away? Do we have any arrangements set up with paths or some other organization to safely take people home? Because there is no safe amount of alcohol that you can be, that has been consumed that you can drive. I have a concern. Also that, uh, about the kids being in the fenced area. I've been speaking to the council for a number of years, decades actually. And I can remember back a long time ago. That we had the fence come up so that we could keep, make sure that the kids were outside. They couldn't get into the area where alcohol was being consumed. And now these ladies are suggesting that we bring them in. I think we're asking for trouble. And so I would recommend. That, that you don't give any, that you don't give them permission. To have, uh, alcohol at the Oktoberfest. Thank you very much.
Alright, thank you.
Ladies, do you guys have transportation?
I was going to ask them to come back up if you wouldn't mind answering those couple of questions. Yeah, sorry, just wanted to ask them to come up. If you wouldn't mind just answering some of the questions that was addressed in this.
We are getting in contact with Kim Burgess to see if she will do the, um, the drive. Coming and picking people up and taking them home, seeing if they even have a. If she'll have another person in the vehicle with her, so that person can take their car home. And, um, then they don't have to worry about their car because I know that's a big fear as well, leaving your car someplace. And we are going to get in touch with the Pat's bus to see if they will be there as well.
Did we have any of these arrangements last year?
No, I do not. Oh, we did.
I'm sorry, I missed what she said.
I know.
We have, we usually, and anytime we've done it, we've contacted the Pat's bus, um. We've had, S C S will usually drive it for a fundraiser, but sometimes we have issues that they don't get enough people using it. Because we close our event early for kind of that reason, to make sure that people aren't over drinking. All that good stuff. So we end at ten and of course, there are other establishments that they can walk to from there, so.
Okay.
But so our event is from technically eleven to ten, weather permitting. We have closed down earlier and, and if it slowed down. You know, we closed down at eight or whatever.
Okay.
And as far as the fence is concerned, it was not to keep kids out. It's just legally for the special event. With how you serve the alcohol, the entire area you're serving in has to be fenced in. No. Open containers can come in or go out of that area. It's not, it wasn't technically for kids, but. And we have had. We've done it this way, I think the last.
Three?
Three or four years? And it's, I mean, it's gone really well.
The third or fourth. Okay, any other questions from the council?
I have a question for Mr. Kyle Miller, if I may. Um, last year, was there anybody escorted or arrested or asked to leave the facility? Cause I know we have officers, they're all also right. So was anybody asked by an officer or did an officer have to be called to this event to have anybody removed or asked to leave? Thank you.
Okay. Alright, uh, was there anyone else that would like to speak in opposition of the permit? Okay, so you've had an opportunity to hear both sides. Are there any final questions from the council? Seeing none, I could use a motion to, uh, adjourn from the public hearing. We have a motion in a second to adjourn from the public hearing. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, same sign.
Unanimous in favor of?
Okay. So we've had an opportunity to hold our public hearing here both sides, uh, for and against the approval of the special events permit. So now that the council have had an opportunity to think about that and discuss it, what would be the council's player?
I move we approve the, um, special permit.
I'll second.
And grant, you would need to, uh, sorry. And grant permission to use the property.
And permission to use the property.
And are you updated? Okay, so we have a motion in a second to approve the special events permit and approve the use of the property. Any final questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, same sign.
Unanimous in favor of?
Okay. Alright, so we will move on to the next item on your agenda. So we, is the, um, appointments to the tree board. We have a couple of appointments to our tree board. This is initiated by Rob.
I will, I will handle this one. Uh, I was going to say maybe it was the trees that wanted to. Make sure that there's the people looking after them. I'm going to go ahead and read the Lamar Tree Board. They're recommending the reappointments of Ms. Judy Arnold. And Mr. Dewey Norfleet, uh, for their three-year terms that'll expire on March the first. Uh, they recommended, uh, Joyce Reedy be appointed to a three-year term that expires on March, uh, twenty-five. Um, Mrs. Nancy either be appointed to a two-year term, if expiring on March the first of twenty twenty-four. So it's, uh, several happened at the same time and there are for different lengths of services. So. Those are the recommendations of the tree.
So we could just approve the recommendation as presented, or if you have specific questions, we could do that as well.
I move we appoint the tree, the members that's recommended by the.
I'll second.
Yeah, we have a motion in a second to approve as recommended by the tree board. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, same sign.
Unanimous in favor of?
Alright, so the next item is the appointment to the water advisory board. This is initiated by Pat Mason, our public works director. Is the tree board full now, Rob?
Uh, I believe we're full, but I, I'd have to check. There, there might be one other one that had resigned that. Brendan, you know, there is one still.
When opening on the tree board.
So if anybody wants to be on the tree board, come apply.
Okay. Alright, so, uh, back on track, appointment to the water advisory board, Pat Mason.
Yes, the Lamar Water Board voted unanimous in favor of pointing Mr. Krugshank to Lamar Water Board pending council's approval.
Okay, any questions from the council? I make a motion to move forward to Kushe. And play to the water board.
Second.
Yeah, we have a motion in a second. Any final questions? Will this fill the board?
Technically, yes. We have one, one other reappointment that'll come up the next council meeting, but we, we will have a full board.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, same sign.
Unanimous in favor of?
Thank you very much, Pat. Lot of appointments tonight. So the next item on the agenda is appointments to the variance board in the building codes, so.
Yes, so, um, just to answer the question ahead of time, to fill out the board, we need to reappoint. Mr. Earl Hawkins to the variance board for a five-year term expiring on twenty twenty-seven in October. Uh, there is, there may be, uh, somebody else resigning as well soon, so there may be another one coming up again soon, so. Okay, but this one is the one that they, they recommended we reappoint.
Make the motion to appoint Earl Hawkins back to the, uh, variance board for the five-year term.
I'll second.
Yeah, we have a motion in a second. Any final questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Unanimous in favor of?
Right, item number five is accept Sursas twenty twenty-three workman's compensation preliminary contribution quote. Uh, this is our city workers' compensation carrier is Sursa.
Right.
And this was initiated by our H R manager as well as our city administrator.
So it's the workers' comp, uh, policy. Uh, if you notice that we've actually saved money that it went down this year, so. Saving about nine to ten thousand dollars and, uh, recommend that we accept these guys as our carrier again.
Good.
So moved.
Say, have a motion in a second. Any final questions?
Shane Cowbridge.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, same sign.
Unanimous in favor of?
Thank you. Agenda item number six, so this is also a Sursa to accept the Sursas twenty twenty-three. Property and casualties preliminary contribution renewal quote. Uh, this also initiated.
Yeah, this, this is property insurance and we did not save a lot of money on this one. But there's a lot of things that, uh, went up on this and it's harder to insure some of the things and, um, so.
Fifty thousand dollar increase. Was it due to anything in particular?
Well, uh, it, the, like law enforcement, maybe it's a little more difficult to, and maybe the, uh. Out at the airport, we have some additional valuation out there that causes our, our property to, to go up. But there were several factors thing, uh, increased the cost.
Okay.
And we do recommend that we go ahead and use these as the, as the carrier again.
Have we looked into these cost increases? If there's anything we can do to. Mediate, control the cost increases.
They've always told us training, you know, and stuff that we can do. When you're part of a pool, you know. The pool absorbs some of these bigger costs and I think anything under ten percent in my twenty-five years of experience is, is good. But I don't feel like this eight percent increase is, is awful. And we did have substantial, um, claims for hail damage this issue, you know, so. Those types of things you can't control, but they, you know, they always talk about, um, doing maintenance and repairs and doing this and that to keep. Um, they have keys and stuff like that. So I, I know that. The departments work hard on that and I, but I do, I don't feel like eight percent is out of line. We had a six percent decrease on one and an eight per. Then increase on the other and I was least, I was budgeting for a ten percent on increase on both. So, I feel like it's a, it's not, I mean, at fifty thousand dollars, yes, it's a lot, but. Like, um, Rob was saying, our costs keep going up on the police coverage. Like, um, Rob was saying, our costs keep going up on the police coverage just because of all the exposure to that. Um, I think COVID caused some things to, to have things go up. You know, just protecting your employees and, and doing things like that and disinfecting property and the way you have to go about things. So I think a lot of that drives some of those costs doing it, some of it's political, I believe. But, um, I think being in this pool has been a lifesaver for us. Um, we were self-insured when I first came here and it was a disaster. So, um, we worked hard to get us back into a pool, such as SERSA, and I think it's, it's been very beneficial.
Is the deduct, the deductible amount the same as last year?
Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? So we would need a motion or a?
Move we accept the quote.
A second.
And authorize the mayor to sign.
Okay. Thank you. Um, so we have a motion and a second to accept the quote and authorize the mayor to sign. If we have all of our questions, are there any final questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, same sign.
Unanimous in favor of?
All right, moving right along, item number seven, motion to ratify the approval, giving permission to apply. For the fiscal year twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three EMS subsidy money through the Southeast Colorado RITAC. This is initiated by Fire Chief Booker.
Jeremy, Linda, did you add anything to that?
I'm sorry.
Did you need to add anything to that?
No, I just point out that the phone call that was conducted is attached.
So this was a phone call just to approve to apply.
Correct.
So it wasn't to accept, it wasn't to do anything other than.
Correct, yeah, it won't be, uh, um, awarded until the next RITAC meeting, then we'll be able to come back and accept it. Like I says, just like last time, pass your money, but stay out of case to, uh, get down to each individual counties.
Okay, and this money can be used for what?
Uh, anything EMS related, so this year we're using it again for our pin into our medical director as well as some, um. Recruitment retention items for the department and some advertising for, um, for repairs and stuff like that.
Okay. Council have any questions for Chief Booker?
I ask an off-topic question. The last grant, how are we, that we applied for, does it go okay?
Uh, so we were able to utilize the six thousand for the payment for our medical director and there was some shipping. Deadlines that we couldn't make to get items onsite and paid for prior to the close of the grant, so we did miss out some money.
Okay.
We have a motion.
Seven.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve, to ratify the council's permission to apply. Any final questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, same sign.
Unanimous in favor of?
Thank you, Jeremy. Next item on the agenda, third updated revision for tiny homes. This was a topic that we've discussed many times, uh, discussing the tiny homes. We've been trying to, uh, review and talk about regulations and. Guidelines to adopt tiny homes into our community. We had tabled the item, um, a while back and we did a work session to allow, um, public input. And we did have a work session and received some good information. But now we were bringing this back for the third revision, updated revision. And, uh, discussion on this, so we can give them some more direction, so. To start off, Rob.
We've noticed that we had some response, some feedback already since we put this up on the agenda. And, uh, it looks like there's a little additional category that we need to probably add between the four thousand or the four hundred and the a thousand square foot. And maybe add a, a, a mobile, call it a, a bungalow houses or something like that. But I believe that there's still gonna be some work needed to do on this one, uh, because there's confusion on several of, of the, the people on the below or above. Four hundred square feet. And we want to give the citizens the option of building either or, and if you said only below four hundred as tiny homes. You need to either put another category in there and allow them to build between a four hundred and, and a one thousand. Cause if you did that, we would be eliminating, uh, between four hundred and a thousand if you said only tiny homes. Cause this, the state's going to the definition of tiny homes is four hundred or below. And so I think that we'll probably need to add another category. Because right now, we're gonna recommend that we still keep it in the mobile home park designation and that's the only place that we could put it. And if you, if you define it as mobile homes as four hundred or below, just like the, uh, the state. Some people who wanted to have a five hundred square foot small home couldn't do it here.
Okay. So during the public comments section, there was an individual that wanted to speak to the council on this topic. Um, the council agreed to let him speak during this discussion, so if you'd like to come up and just state your name and information for the record.
Uh, my name is Mark Westoff, I live on Chestnut Street in Lamar, um. So I'm here as a citizen of Lamar and, uh, the co-owner of Sangre de Cristo Tiny Homes, which manufactures tiny houses out of Gardner, Colorado. Um, and I guess you kind of addressed my, my concern, um, in the, the regulations that I saw. It specified that tiny homes are four hundred square feet or larger, but as a manufacturer, I can't build that. Because the state law that will come into effect next July, uh, re, uh, defines tiny homes as four hundred square feet or less. So no tiny home manufacturer will build a tiny house over four hundred square feet because that's not our license. You need a, a home builder. To build those for you.
Right.
Licensed, a general contractor.
Like I'm saying, if somebody wants something bigger than four hundred, which is, in my experience, my tiny home community didn't have the four hundred. Uh, regulation to be smaller than, all of the tiny homes were larger than four hundred. But less than a thousand and they tried to keep it at five hundred, but you know, ADA compliant buildings are very difficult below four hundred. So some of those people that wanna live in a situation like that need an ADA compliant building and you can't do it. Well, I'm not gonna say you can't, it's very, very difficult.
So in our, in our community, would they have the opportunity to go to the variance board and apply for a variance?
Always.
That's already in place.
Always.
Or under a thousand.
For between the four, all four hundred and under a thousand.
Right.
They can do that now. And they would have to follow the building codes and I think what they were looking at was modifying the building codes or. Um, four hundred to a thousand, you know, it's a different building structure than a thousand and beyond, of course. So they're just trying to clear, clean that up, but, um. Yeah, there is those two definitions of four hundred and below being a tiny home, um, generally on wheels.
But. Can be, can, you can be on foundation as well.
But, you know, we're looking at trying to figure out what to do as four hundred to a thousand.
Okay.
And somehow we need to classify that. Quite tiny homes, but it.
No, I think you, you might run afoul of the state if you defined it as a tiny home.
We won't.
Yeah.
That's why I mentioned about call it bungalow house or whatever, give it a different classification. But the recommendation would be to give them a couple of options on the foundation because it is gonna have to be a permanent structure. If you bring it in on a, a wheel, you're gonna need to put it down on a foundation.
Yes. And we, and most tiny home manufacturers provide that well, um. So yeah, I would, you know, if you wanted to provide in that four hundred to a thousand. A similar code as the one the state is passing for four hundred and below, that would probably make sense. Simply because the state code, if it follows, especially if it follows appendix Q, is likely to make some, a set, uh. Some, I'm blanking on the word, but some, uh, wiggle room around parts of the building code that don't really work on a home that small. Landing spaces, uh, being able to use different sets of stairs for a loft area, things like that. You just can't build the, to the, um, standard twenty eighteen IRC code in a space that small. Because those landing spaces, you know, sometimes say you need six feet wide and that's like the whole, the whole house. So, uh, so these appendix Q, uh, makes, and likely the state code that will come out in the next. Couple months will likely make, uh, exceptions to some of those rules for tiny houses. If you wanted to adopt some of those also for this other four hundred to a thousand, that might make sense. I'm, I'm not sure, but. It wouldn't run afoul of the state code. With the exception being that a manufacturer like myself couldn't build for someone in that range.
Home for somebody in that range, you could build something else if you were.
If I'm a general contractor, you have to be a general contractor. So like, for instance, we don't, we aren't general contractors. We have our own, um. Regulations that we follow through the state for tiny homes specifically, so. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I have one question.
Yes.
So if somebody wanted to come to you and say, okay, I want a three hundred fifty square foot tiny home.
Yes.
That has kitchen, bathroom and living room.
Yeah.
I don't want a three hundred and fifty square foot tiny home that has a bedroom.
Yep.
Can you do that and put them on the same foundation?
So we can do that. It, it depends on how the locality defines that. Some places have said that counts as all square footage. And you've got a seven hundred square foot home. And, you know, but yeah, it'd be like a modular system.
That's why we would need the middle area between the four hundred to a thousand.
And we'll see what the state says about that in their regulations as well, because we are allowed to build four hundreds below. And get a stamp. And there will be, uh, licensed installers, so they will have their own rules from the state. And whether or not the state will allow an installer to put two together or not.
They might require a general contractor to put those two together.
Because then at that point it becomes. Maybe the other size, yeah, so we'll see what the state says there. Um, the Department of Housing Board put together a separate board to come up with these, this code. And as far as I know, they're working on it now, so.
Okay, I'm only asking that every time because.
Yeah.
Looking at it for myself to see all my options and the picture where it might.
Right now.
It may maybe benefit other people that have lots that they own that are just sitting vacant.
Right now, that's a common thing and we've had, uh, counties and cities that have allowed that. And because right now there's no state regulation, it's kind of the Wild West. And, you know, that's why we're actually looking forward to the regulations to give us some guidelines, uh, that hopefully. Can be more uniform statewide, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
So mayor, I guess, are, my recommendation is that we table it, build in that interim or that extra category. And then let them bring it back to you for.
And I'm, I guess I'm wondering if we shouldn't, do you think we would, should wait until the state finalizes their results on that and then?
At least for the small part, but I think that we can develop it. Just not bring it back to you guys for decision until we get that back.
Okay.
Then excuse.
Okay.
What do you guys think?
I think it's a great idea.
Okay, so we'll table that and direct to give direction to continue working on it to develop it. All right. Do we need to? Okay.
Second.
A motion in a second to table, all those in favor with an aye. Aye, opposed, same sign.
Unanimous in favor of?
All right, so next item on the agenda is DOLA, the Department of Local Affairs. Gives a Colorado Main Street mini grant once a year and, uh, this year, it's like Morgan wanted to come in and talk to us.
Yes, so we actually received this grant, I believe, back in twenty twenty before I started. And it was for a five-year term for fifty thousand dollars. So we're in the middle of our term. I'm, I don't know how much we have left. I think it's around forty-three, but correct? Something like that, around forty-three thousand. And, um, with some of that money, we painted the light poles to begin with. Um, we did some of those little projects. And we also started on the enchanted forest stage, which it's been repaired. Now we would like to put a shade structure on it, so we received a quote. Um, Craig has been really generous in helping us get a quote for this project. Um, it has gone up a lot. If we don't go ahead and get moving on this, we're scared it's going to go up even more. Um, so the LPI board has decided that they would like to use this grant money to finish. The stage and make sure that that project is completed.
So these are just shade structures?
This is.
Or is it an actual roof?
No, this is a large shade structure, so it's like the ones in, um, the pocket park. It's like the same concept, but it will go up over the stage and, um, it'll sit on four.
You don't have any drawings or anything of how it'll look like or?
Um, no, we were not. It's, I don't have that with me. It's, but it's basically the same thing as what's inside the pocket park, those shade structures.
Do you know if it'll extend out beyond the stage at all?
I don't believe so, no. It's gonna sit on.
When the sun comes in, it comes in and that shades will, that covering is gonna shade behind the stage.
Right.
Unless they've put it further out.
Right, no, and that's, and these, this plan, I guess, was in the works before I even got here. So, um, and this is what they had decided and this is kind of what they wanted, um. But yeah, this is, but I, I kind of, I can agree, I can see where you're coming from. But it's also going to protect this, the shade or the stage from the rain, from the weather. Cause we do have that really nice track stack on it and there's no production right now. And we're nervous that it's gonna get worked or have some issues. And this is the same guy that also did everything in the pocket park as well. So, um, we were just hoping to use some of those DOLA funds for our grant money to finish that off.
Then you don't have anything like that drawings or?
Well.
Or anything to see?
No, I do not, but I was gonna ask, did they, is, was there any warranty or is it gonna, did they say the last, did you know if they said it lasts five or ten years?
I think the warranty on it was a one-year warranty, so it's not warranted for very long. But it's also the same warranty that we have on the ones in the pocket park, so I'm not sure how long those last either.
Has Lance looked this over and stuff?
It's not a contract, it's just a PO.
It's not, yeah.
This is our quote.
So I, I think my only concern would be, um, I guess my only question, I guess, not really concern is. Um, the difference between doing the shade structures, kind of like the stretch, those are more like a stretch canopy, right? The shade structure, is that correct?
Are you talking about the sails?
Yeah. Not, so would this be?
This is a, this is a similar to the ones that are in, like, over the stage. I guess, that are.
On a.
It's like an awning.
That has arm over the top that would stand over it. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay.
And the, um, Craig's raved about these people. He said that they do really great work. Um, I know, like I said, they did the ones at the pocket park, ones at the park. So he said they're really reputable, they get stuff done really quickly, um. But yeah.
I'm just trying to picture myself.
Yeah, no, I understand, yeah.
I don't wanna put something in there that's gonna be flimsy with the wind that we have here.
Pocket parks protected, yeah.
Right.
Is there a way we can get pictures or something emailed to us and then we can decide?
Yes, so. The only thing is I have to have this PO in by the twenty-second if we wanna go ahead and order these, otherwise the price goes up again. So I don't know, I can do, do we want to table this and then just hope that? Cause we're locked in at this quote right now, but the price. Well, we, whenever we first started this project, we had it added on with the stage and it was around twenty-two thousand. And now I think we're almost to like twenty-seven, twenty-eight, closer to thirty. So it's just continuing with the supply and things like that to go up.
Yeah, this is only showing five thousand.
Yeah, look, that's on top of the.
Well, there's the rate right there, so the shade structure, ten thousand five hundred and seventy-six, we pay five thousand. Yes. And then the installation is the fourteen thousand dollars.
Okay, so that's for the twenty.
So what's the total then?
Um.
Would be this all over here, she didn't put a total.
So what is this one?
So. That's the match amount that we're gonna have.
Just on that very first item, but not our match amount on the rest.
This is just the deposit to get these ordered and ready to come.
Okay, so for thirty thousand dollars. Have we looked at a, maybe a metal roof? It's got four columns already to the stage. Have we looked at putting a?
We have talked about that. Has kind of pushed us into this because it's something that'll match and it's something that kind of goes with the aesthetic that we already have. And he knows that these guys, they're pretty reputable.
Can I speak on that?
Yeah.
Get cleared up a little bit. Cause I have a little bit of information about. The, um, the foundations are made for sun shades only. Which, and they have stainless steel poles that hold them up and they're tied to the stainless steel poles. So starting putting on a metal roof and something like that, it goes into a whole nother building. Code classification where the footers have to be different, you have to have more supports. Because the metal roof doesn't span across the distance and that what the. Because the metal roof doesn't span across the distance and that what the stage is. So you'll have to have more supports, more footers, more rigid tie-ins, cause they all have to tie each other's corners together. So whole, it, it's gonna be more expensive than what this is. Cause this was the first thing that I questioned was the price of the sun shade.
Right.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we're doing a long-term, longer lasting that will.
Oh, yeah.
Stay with the wind and the.
And we have them at the park too, which the parks aren't very protected, I mean, they are a little bit by the tree, but.
Biggest concern that I have right now is the trees. If you look at it, it grows over the corner post. So all the trees are gonna have to be, that one tree's gotta be trimmed way back and what's it gonna do to the tree and it's, I mean.
Well, I mean, safety wise, you gotta do it anyway, so.
Even if we put a metal, no matter what the tree would have, anything that goes on there.
Yeah, well, why don't we just, to keep the meeting moving, let's table it for now, if you can get us the information.
Okay, just email it to you?
Yeah, if you could just email it to the, to Rob and Rob, me get it to the council.
Yep.
And then we can, um, if we need to get it within a certain timeframe, let us know what that timeframe would be and the cost difference be. Um, if we can wait for the next meeting, that would be great, but if we need to do something quicker, Rob can work with us today.
Yeah, four days, I shouldn't. Down that big a difference, I will call them and see if they can give us some more day.
Okay.
Okay, sounds good.
So I'll make a motion to amend to, uh.
Table.
Table agenda nine, number nine.
Yes.
My second.
I have a motion to table, give the item number nine, all those in favor signify with an eye. Oppose, same sign.
Unanimous in favor of?
Okay. Next item on the agenda is donation of craft coat crack fill machine by the city of Buffalo Airport.
Can't be the deal like that.
Yeah.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So about a month ago, the city of Buffalo Airport reached out to me and asked if we'd be interested in taking possession of a used craft coat. Crack seal machine that they had on hand. I believe C dot, Aaron Hox actually replaced that one with a new one for them, so. Staff would certainly recommend that we accept the offer and we can use it at our airport for. Annual crack seal maintenance and I'm all for free equipment.
Is this a pretty significant piece, or is it, I mean?
You know, I'd say it's probably a ten thousand dollar, I'd put a price range somewhere around ten thousand dollars on it, probably haven't actually seen the machine, but.
What it's worth right now.
Yeah.
A new one, wasn't it thirty or more, but that even the smaller version.
Are we gonna do any maintenance to this thing to get it moving?
Uh, they talk like it's, it was working when last used, so I don't anticipate having to do a whole, whole lot to it, so.
And I have, I have reviewed this, I don't have any issues with it. Um, obviously you're taking it as is, in the condition that it is, you're removing all liabilities to the donny. And, uh, or from the donor, and, and, uh, the city would assume all responsibilities, if there's any issues with it, they would be. Um, solely responsible for repairs, there's no warranty for any other, uh, conditions of this, a piece of equipment.
I think as we're trying to grow our airport, and now that the city is kind of moving forward with that, I wanted to point that out, so yes. Except to the council, obviously, but you could please. Give them some direction. I made a motion to accept the credit. Crack call, fill, change, second. And authorize the mayor to sign, and authorize the mayor to sign. I'm gonna do my second, okay? I have a motion in a second to accept the crack cover bill machine and authorize the mayor to sign, any final questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify with an eye. Oppose, same sign.
Unanimous in favor of?
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Thank you, the city of Buffalo. Yes. Um, the next item was the, uh, city of Lamar branding policy, we had a discussion during our work session. On the next two items, um, the city of Lamar has added their new city seal, as you can see in front of the dais here. And we've always had our old, uh, our previous city logo. There's also logos throughout the city and different, for the different departments. And to clarify things for our staff and for the community, who are trying to do a branding policy that would give some clarity as far as. When these logos should be used and when they should not, or how, um, these logos should be used in certain situations, so. Uh, we did have a work session on that previously. And we, there was some concerns that were brought up, that it'll continue to be worked on, so. We won't be approving that tonight, is my understanding of the council, is that correct?
Yes.
So we'll be bringing that back after some further, um, work on that and having it molded into something a little bit cleaner and ready to go.
I move, we table the item.
Yeah, we have a motion, I'm back to the table, the item. And for the future meeting, all those in favor signify with an eye. Oppose, same sign.
Unanimous in favor of?
The next item on the agenda is another topic that we spoke about during our work session. Um, some, there were some concerns in the community or concerns throughout the state. Um, about social media policies after the, uh, lawsuits that were brought up in Denver and. Uh, Woodland Park and other communities, so we wanted to review our social media policy and make sure that we are being compliant with everything that's going on statewide. Um, there were some discussions on that, and I believe that our city attorney is. Been to reach out to some of the organizations like Colorado Municipal League and as well as Rob, uh, they'll be working on that to clean that up as well, so. Uh, it was the understanding during the work session that we would just table this item until it's further developed, is that correct? So can we have a motion to table it?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to table the social media policy, all those in favor signify with an eye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Unanimous in favor of?
Number thirteen was a motion to ratify the approval of resolution twenty-two dash zero nine dash zero one. Which was a resolution to participate in the twenty twenty-two general election, this was initiated by the city clerk. Linda, would you like to speak on this?
Um, so on August twenty-second, um, council approved the agreement concerning conduct of general election. Um, at that time, um, a resolution was not completed, so I did a resolution twenty-two oh nine oh one. Did a phone poll beginning on nine eight and completed on nine nine, everybody agreed, um, in the phone poll to approve the resolution. The phone poll that went out in the packet, there was a typo in the, the.
The title.
The sentence. Saying, um, the results of the phone poll approved for approving resolution, I used an old phone poll. So it has been corrected, that was emailed out to everybody, um, on council. And those others who requested it, and I just need to see if I have, um, a motion to ratify approval of the phone.
So moved.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the phone poll. Any final questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify with an eye. Oppose, same sign.
Unanimous in favor of?
Okay. Agenda item number fourteen, we are coming down to the end, agenda item number fourteen was an item that we introduced at the beginning of the meeting. Um, this was to approve the second amendment to purchase agreement with RB Colorado LLC. Uh, this was initiated by myself and Rob Evans, just to give a little bit of background, of course, everybody knows we've been working with RB of Colorado. And the Flynn Restaurant Group on the property at two, one thousand two North Main Street. Um, as they've continued their progress and work, they've had to do a phase one. We did, we completed a phase one environmental assessment of the groundwork, that we've, uh, finished the phase two. The state is requesting some more information as far as the phase two ground assessment. And we are trying to get the closing closed documents for that, uh, ground assessment so that they can proceed and. Continue with construction, everything is still moving forward, but it's taking a little bit more time than we would like. And obviously what Flynn would like as well.
Hmm, on that, they have applied for and gotten their building permits, we've gone through the process, the plan review and everything like that, so. It is moving forward still.
So they've already received plans of this building, uh, officials reviewed their plans, has approved their permit. We received the title commitment information last week, so everything is still moving forward on this process, but. Um, they will need an extension while we continue to develop and finalize the phase two portion of this. So one thing that we had discussed this, um, the second amendment. We had a conference call this morning with, um, the developers as well as RVs themselves, as well as the. Uh, phase two environmental assessment group, and one of the things that they had asked in this, this review period would be amended to be sixty days. And that would give them plenty of time to, um, complete the assessment in quarters with what we were told during the meeting today, so. That's what this would be, is to give them a sixty-day extension to finalize all of their work before the closing. Any questions from the council?
And I've reviewed it, I don't have any issues with it, it's correct statement, uh, statements by the mayor, just as far as the. Extension of the timeline from the review period from what would have been September twelfth today to November fourteenth. Um, they had previously extended theirs as allowed under the agreement, but now they need to do it through this extension agreement. And I don't have any issues with the language in it.
So moved.
Here we have a motion, do we have a second? So we have a motion in a second to approve the second amendment to the purchase agreement. All those in favor signify with an eye. Oppose, same sign.
Unanimous in favor of?
And that leads us to the miscellaneous items portion of our meeting. I did get a, a couple of, uh, or a message on my text while we were having our meeting. It stated that Thursday night, there'll be hamburgers at the air care hangar for the kickoff of the Yak attack. All is invited, there'll be broad, broad, um, Friday lunch, bronze Friday lunch too. It's a big week for the southeast Colorado, um, airport, regional airport, so if you have an opportunity to join him. Please do, but like I said, it'll be Thursday night, there will be free hamburgers at the air care hangar. For the kickoff of the Yak attack, where the Yak airplanes will be flying into our community, so wanted to point that out. In addition, there were a few questions, I believe, that may have been asked, Martha, did you see any? There was a question. Okay, about. Paint the bridge, to paint the bridge at Willow Creek Park.
Oh.
So that's been one of those topics that we've discussed, the bridge at Willow Creek Park and needing to paint that, we've had. Groups that have offered to help assist that, I think that we've never, we haven't really gotten anything finalized. Do you have any updates or anything on that?
Isn't it, uh, parks and wreck and not?
Yeah, it's parks and wrecked, and I had talked to Rick, uh, about him saying yes, and that there were several. Groups that said, hey, we would like to help with the project, and he said, yes, tell them to contact me and I will make sure that we set them up and we will get that. That done, so I mean.
Yeah.
Rick, Rick will be able to handle that one.
Okay. And then I also seen a question on there, um, is there anything to be done about the Lamar in the old stagecoach motel? Um, and that's. Um, I guess the best that I can say is that that has been a long discussion that's been in progress. Uh, we've had multiple meetings with the owner of the property and other individuals who are concerned about the property. And that are also willing to work with us, we've had a, an individual in the community and a group that's been more than willing to help assist. And we've actually had a meeting just last week with the owner of that property and, um. We have, we've had some very good forward momentum and some movement, they are in the middle of get finalizing their asbestos and. Phase one environmental study test, and, um, so we're waiting for the results of that. But, um, when you deal with a building that's that large with that kind of age. There's always the risk of asbestos or other environmental risks, and we were waiting for those testing things to be done before we would know. To what extent we can help, if we can help, or what they may be able to do. So, uh, the owner of the property is working diligently on trying to find a way to help remediate it and get it cleaned up. And as a city, we have spoken with him and offered to do what we can to help, obviously it's private property, so there's nothing. There's very little we can do because it's private property, however. Uh, we've been trying to have those discussions and keep that communications open in hopes that we can keep the ball rolling. So, any other questions for the council on any topic? I didn't see anything else online, did you, Martha, did I get everything? Okay. Is it, or are you talking about the walking bridge or the roadway bridge?
The road. The roadway shit, that's the one that want, they want painted, walking bridge is gonna come in already.
So I think that'd be sandblasted, is it iron? I don't know if it needs to be sandblasted or just sanded, you know.
Think he wanted to scrape it.
Yeah, probably want to at least scrape it.
And it would be the railing that really needs it, but he was gonna.
So we actually had an individual contact me earlier this week who was working on their Eagle Scouts and that. Um, that may be an opportunity for a project that they may wanna work on, we're, we're just looking at all the different options and organizations that wanna contribute, so. But we'll look at that further. Okay, so we do have item number sixteen, which is an executive session for discussion of personnel matter under colorized revised statute sections. Twenty-four, six, four oh two, subsection four, subsection F, for the discussion of the city council vacancy, so we will have. An executive session following this meeting, there will not be any decisions made out of that. So for the general public, we will close out our broadcast for the evening. But we do appreciate you joining us and we hope that you'll join us again at the next meeting in, in two weeks, so thank you for joining us, have a great evening. Oh, I need a motion to go in. Thank you, motion in a second to move into executive session. All those in favor signify with an eye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign.